Living space that close to the property line is just because it's a pre-existing condition?
Exactly.
So it's not an issue?
And so there's no modification to the footprint, then that's not going to trigger a review by the zoning board of appeal.
The only note from the DPW was about the third driveway space. The revised sketch for what you're proposing to do.
I have the older plane up there, apologize.
I'll hold it up.
I saw in one of the photos you submitted that there's an existing gravel space, that's the third space, so you're going to recreate the gravel space further?
Yeah, we've all extended it forward to meet the parameters of that.
Space to do that. We... Right, we have to extend it forward and keep the width.
We have a very wide, whatever the word is, like opening on the street. When we first put that in many years ago, we had tried it out, making sure the cars didn't back in.
Yeah, we made it so it functionally worked.
And it did work, but I guess it was, you know, requested that we expand it.
So any other questions or comments from the board before we open it up to the public? Okay, so at this point, is there, is there anyone here that has any comment regarding this project that would like to speak?
Move to close public comment.
Okay, so the public comment section is closed. The other piece that were...
Do you have to vote on that?
Oh, yeah. But we can do it with him, right? In favor of closing the public hearing, or, yeah, public comment? Unanimous?
Move to support the, uh, the proposed renovation area, um, on Norfolk.
Before you finish that statement, there's a question of whether we're going to waive the traffic mitigation fee, which we can just wrap into the, you know, the motion. If, right now, it would be a $2,000 traffic mitigation fee due to the very small nature of this. Staff's recommending that we consider waiving that. So it's really, the board has the ability to waive the traffic mitigation if the project could be otherwise done by Wright. Before the two-family by Wright was adopted, an attached in-home structure would be allowed by Wright, wouldn't it need a site plan? So that's why I'm recommending that, you know, this is like, it's far lower, smaller than what previously would have been allowed without any board approval. So maybe, maybe the motion can just include whether we're gonna, yep.
I move to... Thank you, sir, I've got to be green. I move that we, uh, allow for the site plan addition within New Way District on Norfolk Avenue and, uh, the traffic mitigation.
So we'll take a vote on approving this hearing? All in favor? Okay, so unanimous?
Congratulations.
Yes. Thanks for coming out for such a...
Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your help.
Could be inaugural post-COVID hearing here. You're welcome. Do we have to do anything further with that before we move on to the next one, Carolyn?
Yep, you can open the next hearing.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. So the next meeting, uh, the next hearing on our agenda is for a planned two-family greater than 2,000 square feet by New Way Homes at 148 Federal Street in Florence. The applicant, John Hansel, has approached the podium, and he's going to give us a little overview of this project.
Good evening. John Hansel, New Way Homes, uh, wants to build a two-family over on Federal Street. This two-family will follow the Section 350 E that's 6.11, form-based criteria for a two-family house. Possible, two-family house is also over 2,000 square feet. Two-family will meet the goals of sustainable Northampton by having no fossil fuels burning within, within that heating or cooking. The house will also be entirely electric, and it will be solar-ready. And the two-family also adds the housing inventory in Northampton that definitely has a shortage right now. And the two-family is what the city, the city council, in fact, Jared, Jared, our councillor, Jared's been looking for. Has said that to me, and he wanted to see more two-families, and I think at the last city council meeting or the one before that, he also mentioned that, if I said something wrong. So, he's been asking for this, for more units on one single piece of property, over the housing shortages and crisis that they have right now. My honesty makes a lot of sense. Anybody in the board have any questions?
Any comments on this?
John, do you think you're putting a garage on here, a carport or something?
I want to get a carport in the back. I have this thing that I think everybody needs, a garage, or at least a carport where they can get out the weather, have a charging thing in there, and be enough for two cars. It's powered up now, so get out the weather and...
Any other questions before we open it up for public comment?
I just have one question about, I think I saw this comment with, for DPW, but it looks like that iron pin in the front corner of the property, and the property line isn't really intersecting that iron pin. They have a stamp survey plan there, so I assume the surveyor flushed that all out, but it's usually on survey plans, I see like a zoom-up close, and there's an explanation for how they determined where the property line is.
Well, this lot was just taken, and it was just done by another surveyor, LeBarge. And my surveyor went out there and he verified all the pins that LeBarge had put in. So everything's on the money. I don't know why they put that in, nor does my surveyor know why the DPW put that in.
Well, I'm just looking at your plan, and the property line doesn't end at the iron pin, so that...
Oh, you mean that somebody would pass or something, or...
Yeah, well, usually the property lines will intersect at the pin, and when the pin isn't in the right place...
I think that's the rear yard is the next one.
I think that was actually done up, uh, just at LeBarge.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying, right here. Whoa. Carolyn! Oh, yeah, there we go. Usually there's like some sort of explanation about why property lines aren't ending at the iron pin.
Look up the one that council, that, this LeBarge said, and see if it was done by him. My surveyor just worked off what he had done. That was just done recently by...
What would be the implications anyway to that?
Oh, I don't know, there's a, is it a 15-foot offset in the zone? Is that the side setback?
Fifteen on the side, and it's also 10 in the front and 20 in the rear.
It just looks like you're pinned to that 15-foot setback, so if the property line isn't in the right place, then the house would be in the wrong way.
Have this stamp survey, if, you know, there's, that's what we have to go by, and if it's, if it's wrong, he's going to have a title problem going forward, so I wouldn't say it would be an issue that planning board would necessarily...
So you're saying...
...continue for, or have further discussion. I think it's sort of a heads-up, something looked at me with your decision.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just want you to, I don't want you to build the house and then have it be in the wrong place, or it's really for your own protection. But I don't care what you do.
Before, I just don't know what the guy's doing. But, uh, you're saying because the line doesn't end right with, end with pins?
Thinking if it kicks in this way, John, towards, towards, towards the house, that it may, that it may clip that 15 feet at the back of the house where you are, if that clips into like 14 feet, then in theory, you're one foot over what you should be on the setback. Right, Chris, is that your sense?
Yeah.
I mentioned that to my surveyor, because I sent all the things from DPW all the way to him. Anyway, he said, I do believe he worked on the in-or-out drawn-up by, uh, Mr. LeBarge.
On a separate issue, all winter, this is like a very wet site, you probably are aware of that. Huge amount of water on the site, and I don't know, I didn't see anything in the application. I don't know if DPW is thinking about it, but like...
Right now, the way it's situated, it's like a swimming pool.
Yeah.
That's why it's weak. Organized rate, that's getting, whatever, depending on what time of year it is. But the thing is, when we get done with it, it won't be like that. So we're going to be tied into the storm drains, any water that's there, drains would do around the, uh, the footings. Everything's tied in, so all the water will go there. Plus, we're going to build it up to not run into any of the neighbors' yards, because that's of course against the law. Uh, and the person on the right-hand side, I did speak with them, as to where the driveway is, because when they all bought these, the property, the original owners, it wasn't like they really cared much. And we would bring in some fill to, no problem, because I'll be paying for it. Take things level on that side. One thing I will say, and I, not to brag, my asset is that, that I've worked with the same guys since '85. Ever had a problem, it's one of the most anal people I've ever dealt with. And that's what, something, I'd say every, all the guys that work with their people, some of us want problems after the fact.
This is not a planning issue, it's really something just for your own, you know, at your risk, so I just wanted to point that out.
All right. The only other note I saw from the DPW is that just the width of the curb cut wasn't labeled, and it's going to be, you know how wide your driveway is going to be?
Well, the thing is, the, why is you can go the curb cut 15 feet?
15, okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Can't go anything more, because DPW deserves to, and that, once a lot of people make you, let you do, get wider, just to cut in, driveway itself, the opening itself can't be more than 15.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, before we open it up for public comment? Okay. Does anybody here have any public comment regarding, just please come to the podium as, as you...
If I can speak loudly.
No, you can do it. Get your name and address for the record, please.
But you can say, if you share the mic, I'm not against that. So I guess I have a question. First of all, how much housing has gone into Bay State in this area, and how much is affordable, and is that something that you all should be, can or ought to, or whatever, in the proper word, is be concerned about? That is my first question. And then I guess the proposal has to do, because houses oversized, so why did you initially send it to whatever it was, a thousand, you know, and now this is a bigger house? So why, it's good to have, you know, electric and all that stuff? It's better to provide smaller spaces for people to live in, given what we're dealing with with the climate? So those are my questions.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment?
Are you going to answer? How are you doing this? Are you going to take all the questions?
Let's, let's watch all the questions.
Yeah, all the questions.
And then in the end, okay. Alex Jerris, Lake Street, Florence, so the councillor from West Side. I do appreciate this project will be a two-family house, and will have all electric heating. I wondered what the total square footage is, because the supporting information, I looked at here in, in the initial application, it talks about that the supporting information, which contains all of the detailed project information, originally wasn't there, and now, Carolyn, is that the, um, so unnotated as New Way 148 Federal Final? Because that's just a series of floor plans. So I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing any data, so that's one question. The, so, yeah, the total square footage. Then drainage issues, certainly one of the things I hear from residents, especially in Bay State, that after developments have occurred, that they experience showers, basement flooding, it's unclear whether this is directly connected or not, but certainly several neighbors around Hinkley Street are wanting to... None of all the specifications at that time. So I do encourage the board to look carefully at how drainage is done, and there need to, with the, the understanding that we will likely see greater flood events with climate change, is there any to look at those carefully, and there whether the mitigation that needs to happen, needs to be more mitigation than, than currently for these development projects. So that, those are my questions.
Anybody else have any comments, questions?
Question was, Brian, how many square feet, each unit's 1281, and that's a comfortable area aside, I'd be modest by any means for each unit. I'm extremely frustrated by everybody saying affordability. Fact is, who am I, I'm a yard by two-by-four for 10 bucks, I do this. It's not funded, that's, affordable housing comes from the state or federal government. I'm just a guy that goes to work like everybody else. Everybody new that goes to work talks about the paycheck at the end of the week. People that don't, or haven't built, know everything. Their closing costs, and they pay for them, or leave us on their transfers, and they think, well, this thing, it's one thing's cost. For someone who don't know what you're buying. Come after me with mansions, my houses are 1,800 square feet. Mansion, I mean, with extra white houses, when they're 30 feet wide, this one's 24 feet wide. And not extra white houses, but the only thing they can come after me with is they're not affordable. To make, if I sold them for what cost me to build them, it's still not be affordable. And they don't realize that, but they keep saying, and it's just, it's the next, the only thing they got left to talk to you. And, and they don't really realize, not that they much care, but they just want to throw something. It's really tiring, and I read on the forums, on the Northampton forums, about these houses are affordable, they're this or that, but, yeah, I'm a private individual, I'm not a make-a-looker. And if they're all affordable, they can sell their houses at a very affordable price and take a loss, because I know they're as well, they're going to put their house on the market, they're going to go to $1. And very tiring, and if somebody has something to talk to me about that intelligent, full conversation, something they want to talk about, I have to listen.
I think that was probably a question more for aimed at the city as to our, well, a lot of what we're doing as far as, I don't think that's really aimed at you.
Oh, I think some of it's, you know...
Right now, it's, you know, we're here, we're here to look at this particular, you know, project tonight, but I do, we do hear, the question is, you know, what are we doing to assure more affordable housing? So that's just separate. I think, I think, Mr. Hansel, for you, you answered the question about the total square footage, and then Alex asked if we had the final information here, which looked to me like we did. It looked like we've got a, basically a permit set here from R.K. Miles.
The part that's missing typically is, and it was submitted, it's just that the building department didn't get attached to this application, it's just sort of, what's submitted to the building department says, you know, exactly the square footage total, and that's sitting at the building department, it did get, it did not get transferred over. But sort of what, to respond to the square footage question, anything, anywhere in the city, no matter who's building it, whether it's residential or commercial, anything that will result in the construction of more than 2,000 square feet triggers planning board review. That's the only reason why this is here, and it's more than 2,000 square feet, because there are 1,200 square feet per unit plus the carport. So it's not an, and you all have talked about this before on the board, that the median unit size in Northampton is around 1,700, 1,800 square feet for a residential unit. So combined together, these are two smaller units, but the total square footage is pumped up over 2,000, and that's the only reason why this two-family comes before the planning board, and because of that, it triggers compliance with the new two-family design standards requiring the, um, ener, the all-electric heat component. So just wanted to clarify that. Maybe while I've got the mic, you may not, you just can respond about affordable housing. Affordable housing is by definition meeting the needs of people who only have incomes that are 80% or less of the area median in this region. So everyone in this room who owns a home would not qualify for affordable housing. That is subsidized housing. There's a difference, and what we like to talk about is attainable housing, which is sort of the next step, meeting the needs of people who are at 80 to 175% of area median income, and to, and of course, building two units on one property disperses the cost of that land acquisition across two units instead of just for a single-family detached home. So this definitely meets those, um, goals of trying to create a mix of housing types so that they can be more attainable to people of more modest incomes that wouldn't qualify for subsidized affordable housing.
Thank you. I'm not sure, should we, Claudia wants to speak again.
Well, you can decide whether you want to take new comments only, or...
Uh, yeah, it, it would be great if you have something to say that we haven't already addressed here tonight.
It's connected to my opening comments.
Is it related to this project?
Yes, yes.
This, this, this project?
Yes, it's related. Well, I feel like, I did, my question was addressed to the board, and I feel like the language is a bit insulting that the gentleman is using for people who raise questions. I'm just saying, the business about where decisions get made, that the planning board is a planning board. So when I say how many units have gone into Florence, and how many of those are affordable, and I know there's a legal definition, but people in the public understand affordable means a schoolteacher could buy a house, or rent an apartment, or whatever. So that's what I'm talking about, and it seems that's kind of what I'm here to try to untangle for myself, I mean, for you all. If, if people, we're getting, we're getting developments, how does the planning board ensure that it's not all housing that's out of the range of schoolteachers, or preschool teachers, or people? What is, what is a plan from the planning board?
The truth is, there's nothing we can do, because we don't have the power, and we aren't, embodied with the power by the city or the state, and we're not, so there's actually no functional way we can do that. That's an issue of how the economics of housing in our country is set up, and we cannot possibly relitigate this issue on every possible project that we, comes before us, so I would submit that we move on, and...
Okay, you're telling me the planning boards cannot make a plan about how to have affordable lots by rights?
The planning department isn't, is, with the planning board, we're a volunteer group, we come here to hold hearings and to accept public comments on specific projects. You know, zoning and codes and all of that, all initiates with the planning department.
Okay, great. Thanks, I don't want to, I'm...
Okay?
Thank you.
We're here, we're here to make sure that the applications are fairly adjudicated against what the rules already are for everybody, not depending on who they are, who comes to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to close public hearing?
I make a motion to close public hearing?
All in favor of closing public hearing? Unanimous? So board members, any further questions, comments, thoughts?
I would encourage, I mean, this, we, we run into this a lot in Northampton, it's a city made out of pre-existing conditions. I would encourage the councillor to talk to his other constituents about, and this is pretty, pretty clearly seems to be a situation where the neighboring houses are draining onto this, what was an empty lot for a long time. The answer about drainage is not going to be something they're going to like to hear, is that their prob, their water's going out of this lot, and it's probably going to go the other way. That's my hunch, I don't know that that's for sure, but that's, that's something that, welcome to politics, I guess. I, I think, I think it's, it's going to be a hard issue to deal with, but, truth is, a swimming pool has to be drained.
It might get better, I mean, if they are putting, putting drainage back into the two-year...
Right, I think we heard from the applicant that, that he's helping the neighbor not drain to his property somewhere.
I mean, I think so, from the topography, it's clear that, and I sent this to one of the butters, and the, um, you know, David, is that all the lots on Riverside Drive sort of funnel down, so this has become sort of the detention pond, if you will. But it, it appears that it dissipates, so the soil may be good. But there are also ways to address that, right? There's, there's a lot of solutions. I would say DPW recommended to all the applicants in this round to, that sediment control plan be considered. I think maybe that, I'm not suggesting you make a condition about that, but I think a simple condition saying that all sediments have to remain on-site. You know, so there's no question about whether it's appropriate to be sending silt into the street or into the budding neighbors, so you could certainly do that. The applicant also is aware of the traffic mitigation requirements, and so typically those permit conditions are such that that mitigation for the two new units on this property be made at the time of certificate of occupancy, because that's when we see the additional in the urban residential B districts. And because of the size, it triggers site plan review, two new units, so it would be one-time payment of $2,000.
Okay, so what I heard is if we do choose to approve this, it will be with the condition of one-time payment of $2,000 for traffic mediation, and the requirement that all sediment remain on-site.
I move that we approve the project with conditions as read.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approving, uh, the second unit at, I'm sorry, two-family greater than 2,000 at 148 Federal Street, Florence. Bye, yes. Okay, thank you, everybody, for that one. Now we'll move on to our third hearing tonight, which is a site plan regarding a detached unit on a parcel with an existing two-family at 88 Crescent Street in Northampton. And that's Michael George and Kristen Barry George. Would you like to tell us about your project?
Sure. It's actually detached unit, it's an existing single thing.
Wasn't reading right, yeah, mhm.
Anyway, um, introduce myself, my name is Mike George, I'm not a developer. A developer, um...
Yeah, why don't you give us a tour?
You can use the mouse, yeah.
Here's the existing house, this is Crescent Street, down here.
I didn't load it in this PDF. I have to pull it up on my screen.
Yeah, I have a board, I'll make it a board.
Sure, that'd be great, yeah.
I was prepared for analog, I didn't know. So anyway, here's the, sort of, the existing, this was taken about a month ago, this is the Crescent Street. Where we're proposing to go to small cottage. Closer up to the back of the house, back of the house faces Crescent Street. Garage. And there's a path that comes up from Crescent Street up to the existing house. This is a view from the Round Hill condominium parking lot side. Running down, the garage and the side of the house.
Do you think that the vegetation along Crescent Street recently, no? We call it being more overgrown than that picture.
Pretty overgrown, the front yard and everything.
I think sure it was, it was on the other side of the growth.
So we're proposing to do, this option is to, existing single family, a two-family, car garage, and small cottage down here, under, near Crescent Street. Now, there's two cottages parking, really, one here, and then one where the existing garage is. Parking from two spaces to five spaces to accommodate three residential units.
To the same footprint?
Yeah, it's easy to imagine, because the second option is basically this disappears, cottage. And there's an apartment above the garage. Footprint is almost the same, it's maybe a little, like a foot higher, and there's stairs on the side of the garage. Plan, you know, as we, we thought about it was, you know, if we purchased the property, we're supposed to close at the end of the month. Move into the existing single-family home, make some modest improvements. It just hasn't been, had improvements done in a long time. Then either to start construction on the cottage and garage, or the, or the apartment. So sit there, begin construction, and then once that's complete, move into the cottage and then begin renovations on the two-family. And then when we're done. It's not like we're trying to, like, squeeze every ounce of profit out of it. Part of it is, like, you know, the plan is for living conditions, basically, because we want to move in, and that house is too big, you know, for us as it is. So that's why we want to make it into a two-family. And we want to build someplace to live. That we're renovating the thing, that's a long project. And we also want to, we haven't decided which we think is the best for us. You know, our plan is to move in, live there maybe for a month or two, come up with a plan with a landscape architect, see what we feel is right for us, whether it's garage, apartment, or if it's the cottage. You know, we've had a lot of input, met with Karen. Just enough to introduce us to the neighbors and have a meeting with us, and we had lots of good input. It was very respectful and thoughtful, a lot of good ideas. Not surprisingly, people, neighbors, abutters who are closer to us definitely prefer the apartment over the garage. And I've got some other people that have said, not so publicly, but they're like, no, I think the garage would be good. I mean, I'm sorry, the cottage would be really good. And, you know, some of the, some of the, and some of the, whatever, against the cottage. Some of the, whatever.
Arguments?
Yes, some of the arguments against the cottage, basically, is that it doesn't, like, thin, it's out of character for the neighborhood. A couple things to that is, like, there's so many different architectures in that neighborhood. I don't know what would fit, I mean, there's Victorian, colonial, there's cottage, apartments, there's... And the other thing is, part of it is, like, on that side of the street, you know, houses before it, Nasser, on the west side, have sort of big lawns, they sit back, and there's a grand, and they're beautiful. This one is already a little different because it doesn't have a grand front lawn that faces the street. The other house actually faces a road condominium parking. Back of the house. So it's like, it already has a different relationship with Crescent Street than any of the other houses near it.
So can you clarify, I don't think you can apply for two options. Just, what are you applying for?
Which one? You gotta tell us which one.
Sounds like we can tell you. You gotta just come to us with an application, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the original application, just to clarify, the original application had the cottage. I think that the latest version is not to have the cottage. I think that he could certainly, if the cottage is approved, which was the initial intent, if he decided not to do that and just put the living space above the garage, that could probably just be an administrative amendment if you didn't want to approve both options. I think it makes sense to go ahead and evaluate the cottage, because that's what was submitted. But it doesn't necessarily take, I mean, you can always do less than what's permitted in a permit that's granted by the planning board.
What does the cottage look like? Is it a bedroom downstairs or upstairs, or is it two-story, one-story?
It's a single story.
Green light, green light.
There were elevations in the...
Yeah, it's in the application.
Think, um, driving by the property and then...
Are you going to keep it a, was it, was it a bowling alley or a basketball?
It was a bowling alley.
Bowling alley, I think.
Genetic?
Yeah, the genetic.
A single family.
Genetic, yeah.
So if asked us, you gotta rebuild the bowling alley, sorry, you want our opinion?
This is a rendering of the cottage design. But it's planned to be a single story, would not be a two-story, but either way it'd be a single story. The cottage is 720 square feet. That is, you know, a rendering of what we come up with, with the porch around the front and the side. Single story, one bedroom. This is the... This is the view. From above, the main house.
Does zoning address, make sure where the garage is at a different elevation from the house substantially? Doesn't matter?
No, that's not addressed.
The driveway would be coming off of Crescent?
No, the driveway currently comes off of, to right away. Yeah, there'd be no driveway off Crescent. The same as the way back. Cottage. A rendering of the apartment. Some rendering of from Crescent Street. The cottage, now, there's no landscaping in here. Vehicle with the apartment, the, this would be, the garage, the apartment would be above it. Put it in relationship, I guess, house itself is, I think, 28, under 30 feet tall on the, on this side to the ridge. Elevation comes down, so the garage itself would be around 27 feet, but it also would sit about three or four feet lower. The garage with the apartment would be three to four.
I think we just want to talk about the cottage for this application. And if you're going to do the apartment with the garage, it'll be an amendment, and Carolyn will decide if that's administrative.
I'm weirdly thinking, I looked at this, this house, can you really make that turn in there? I mean, there's a beat-up garage there currently. Really can you make that turn into that?
Can you stand right here?
Yeah.
Easy. Okay, back to cottage. And just, there was some, I just saw some of the comments that said it was two feet off the, well, it shows a 10 feet of the setback. Porch is about 17 feet off the street. Cottage itself is...
Back to 10, though, I mean, that's, the required setback is 10.
Right. It's 10 feet off the side setback, it meets all those zoning requirements in the URC district. I guess, like I was saying before I switched gears, you know, that it was, I don't think it would be out of place. The way that lot is already set up, front faces of the house facing, I mean, you're sort of looking at the back, you're looking at the back of the house anyway, to the, you know, making the lot out. The cottage in the front.
Carolyn, do you have to be concerned with any trees on the site?
Yes, so there are, as you can see on the site plan in the lower right corner, there are a couple of large trees that are close to the foundation, proposed foundation location. I did send a message to Mr. George about the fact that there would, the board typically requires tree protection. Given the proximity of this, I also suggested that he connect with certified arborists, because the planning board sometimes does require reports from a certified arborist. He actually does have an arborist report. It's, I put it, it's on another file here, but it came in today, that makes recommendations about how to treat and protect those trees. So any, if the board were to move forward in approval, I would certainly recommend a condition that the certified arborist be on-site and provide a certified letter to us indicating that tree protection was in place in accordance with the recommendations, and that the air spading as recommended, as recommended by the arborist, be performed before excavation. And that would help protect any of the feeder roots coming out from the...
But there's no proposal to remove any trees?
There is. But not... It's in the report, but this tree right here. Norway maple, it's in the report, it's got a pretty big split in it, and it's leaning this way. Like a split in the trunk, and it's got some rot in it. Tree over here.
That's something you would take down anyway, so you did not, correct?
Yep. And then there's another maple over here that it was dead.
So those trees, the ones that the arborist has determined to be sick, diseased, dying, dead, would not trigger tree replacement?
There are no other trees that would trigger a tree replacement?
I think the plan from the... And DPW, just so you know, you may have seen this, DPW comments also made the same recommendation about... On site. And there were some issues about construction over some sort of standard DPW heads-up conditions about utility conflicts, and so all of that gets addressed sort of during the final phases of pre-construction permitting, but they're related to connecting to you. Any board conditions?
Any other questions from the board before we open it up for public comment? This time, is there anybody in the audience that has... This time, is there anybody in the audience that has, please step to the, I want to call it a podium. Station. Uh, state your name and your address, please.
Oh, no. Meeting's over.
Do you have my comments in electronic format with the pictures or...
Sorry, say that again, your name?
Theodore Paradise from 94 Crescent.
Oh, um, I don't, I, they went into the project file, I don't have them on the screen.
There's some pictures in this that make it useful, if you guys share.
Just know that we did read all of this.
Yes.
I just, just know that we did, we all read all eight of the letters, yes.
Thank you, Sally. So I appreciate the opportunity to address the, uh, the planning board and the planning committee tonight. Theodore Paradise, I live at 94 Crescent Street, which you can see on the plot plan is, is right next to the property that Mr. George is acquiring at 88 Crescent Street. So I'm going to butter to the property there and I want to make a few things clear at the outset of my comments. One, I'm not opposing the project in general, the conversion of this one family lot into a three-family property. You know, I worked with and supported John Hensel, who built the house in what used to be my backyard there on the corner at 181 Round Hill. And, you know, this is, is right next door, it's going to add parking, it's going to change the character. Yes, all of these things are true. But what I wanted to come and talk to the planning board about tonight is that the planning board is not a rubber stamp. The planning board wants to take inputs about different plans. And there are ways to do this conversion, and Mr. George referenced this, in a way that is less impactful to this area. So, Sally, you mentioned that you've read all the comments, and I appreciate the planning board taking time to do that. In the comments, you'll note that there are a few considerations around the planning board looking at infill and even back to the 2008 presentations on infill. There's lots of discussion about gray, uh, ground fields redevelopment, carriage house conversions, garage conversions, that sort of thing. And the importance of keeping in the nature of, of the, of the area. There was, um, a quote there that I mentioned in my comments, infill must be designed in a way that surrounds the, protects its surroundings and creates a sense of place. And Mr. George is right, I appreciated his conversations with me and the other neighbors discuss all these things. We're looking forward to having him and his wife as a neighbor. That there is all sorts of architecture on Crescent Street. There are a lot of multi-use housing already, large houses that have been turned into multi-family housing. Apartment buildings on the other side of the street, condominiums behind where I live. But there is along Crescent Street, and you're mentioning the overgrown part of 88, if you know it well, a part of Crescent that gives it its character. And people come to Crescent to walk on it in its view. These are not enormous lots, these are actually lots with the house set, basically it's back at the lot with the front of the, the property's public facing. So very public presentation of this. They look, they take pictures. This row of houses is just a bit of a treasure in North Hampton. And so what I would like to ask the board to consider tonight is, Mr. Whitehill, you mentioned you're asking for one or the other. Mr. George is asking for the, the new house on, on the bottom, and noted the possibility of a carriage house residence. So I'm asking that the new house option not be approved. And I am in favor of the, the parking, the three-family from the one-family conversion and the new carriage house. But the nature of this space, of this row, of green space that creates this, this place for people to walk and enjoy in North Hampton would be very altered. And as you see from the pictures, the, the yard right now is beautiful. The back of the house is kind of the front of the house, it's got a big porch and things like that, it sort of sits up and looks down onto the street like the other houses and creates the same feel. It's not a misfit really in terms of feel across it. Appreciate that, that Mr. George has a lot of landscaping to, to do around this house. But in, in looking at the, the goals of the city, which were, you know, the sustainability plan, that can absolutely be achieved. It can be achieved with the alternatives that Mr. George talked about, converting this one-family lot to a three-family lot with a garage conversion. And it can be consistent with the character of the area, which is something for the board to consider. And these places, once we get rid of them, again, sometimes it makes sense, like my backyard where John built the house. And sometimes it takes a public space, which is almost like a park along Crescent Street, again, public-facing space is what most of these lots are, and really change it in a way that is not necessary to accomplish. In terms of significant trees and the abutting concerns, on the site plan there, you'll see a silver maple. It's five to six feet in diameter. You'll note in my comments that the planning grade section 250 provides guidance on the critical root zone. The critical root zone for this tree would be 120 feet, taking the, the smaller of those diameters. So that's 60 feet out from any side of the tree. The foundation cut is proposed to be 22 feet from the tree, which is well within the 50 feet. But it can be those, you're certainly there. I appreciate the arborist report. I've hired a lot of experts in my time as an attorney and done many siding things with experts. And if the cottage plan is approved, I think a, an independent arborist for the city may be a, a good condition to, to put on this. Because I tend to get a very friendly report from my experts and it's usually opposed by the other outside experts saying something completely different. So something to, to always bring an independent expert on here would, would, I think, be helpful. But again, not opposed to the project and appreciate Mr. George reaching out, talking to us about this. Yes, it's going to change things, I know some of my neighbors are very concerned about losing that back garden to parking and other things. But I think, you know, we can do this, we can go from one family to three families, but we can do it in a way that preserves a really important and...
I appreciate your sentiments and your comments. Anybody else? Your name and your address, please.
My name is Edward Feld, and I live at 97 Crescent Street. I want to second everything that was just said. There is, I think this row of houses on Crescent Street is a charming part and very special part of North Hampton. There is not any, uh, uh, sorry, I was, uh, any, most fronting directly on the streets. All of them are on the street. And this is going to stand out as a first sign and really change the character of the street. Those of us who, who find this place, um, are deeply... Thank you. Chris, I, I live at 50 Crescent Street. And I too, I mean, I wanted to acknowledge what Theodore said about how... The neighbors together and what was very... I wanted to say that the house that I live on, 50 Crescent Street, is not, uh, I have no best wishes today. See this lot, it's not within my sight, I'd be with the... But I did want to, I did want to underline what, um, what... I really need to think of you. How this would, this kind of setting, this kind of we make, so, so... I say, I, I appreciate what Mike, your saying about by style, but it's not a question of style, it's a question of that space. And I think... Also reiterate the point that... Question of what counts, the front of the house and back of the house is, is, the house is, has a lovely way of, the angle is part of the charm of that. It's one of the, it's also, houses in that row, it's the one that has the most mature trees, that of trees. Most lovely of all the lots. And as Theodore was saying, we do, you know, people come all around to see this. Question of what counts, I realize the question of what counts... With the neighborhood, it's a hard question, it's a hard question. I do, I hope you keep that in, in view. And there are different ways of reading and keeping with the neighborhood. You could look to other houses on that, say, well, this house is close to the road, it's not, and therefore you could prove it. You could read that house in relation to that sequence. Then it feels very different, that, that choice is up to you. I think if you pick the former, and because we have other examples, you continue to erode the possibilities of other things. You've got... I, I, I don't know what could have referred you, but it really is something that I... But they often affect me.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak, public comment?
Can I just clarify the jurisdiction for the board? Site plan review is for one additional structure on the property. The board, it's an allowed use, so the board has to approve the permit if it meets all the technical standards. That doesn't mean it's a rubber stamp, but there are, there are no discretionary evaluation criteria such as evaluating one portion of the block versus another and determining that this portion of the block is certainly preserved as it is. So those are more subjective standards that aren't applicable to a site plan.
That, so, and, so we're looking at this new cottage, we're not looking at all the garage?
So the, you are looking at the, um, you're looking at the garage in that the whole project is under site plan review. However, the only thing that's triggering site plan is the fact that there's a new residential structure being proposed that detached from the, uh, the existing structure. So, um, what that means is, um, you're, you know, the, Mr. George could come in, create a two-family today and build that garage, and it would never come before the planning board. So it's not the garage per se that's triggering the site plan, it's only this new cottage. And so you need to evaluate to make sure, to make sure that this cottage, the location, the orientation is meeting the general design criteria for, you know... But that's the only piece that's triggering site plan review.
I just had a comment, one question. Question was, um, if we are approved to do the cottage, we end up finding, because one of the arborist's recommendations was to, this tree that Mr. Paradise... Because we were going to airspace and check this out, find out that the roots, problem, do we have? And then the other thing, the other question was, I mean, I think, I think the cottage... We're not married to either one yet, we're trying to decide.
You've made that clear.
If I compared, if I was going to, if I was going to, when I was thinking about it, it's like, if I put the cottage there and I... Would, I'd be on this front porch, drinking my coffee, talking to people 15 feet... It would be 85 feet away up here, sitting on the porch. And that's okay to do, but if you turn it off... I would be like sitting right there saying, "How you doing?"
Not our business.
Yes. And then my last question is, if the side is not capital, nowhere near that, and you wanted to do the apartment with the garage, is that just in this...
Um, it depends on, you know, you don't have to look at the architectural, you know, if, if it's still within the height and it's, and you also need, well, it's only a 10-foot setback, but you need to make sure the garage meets the setbacks for the residential structure.
Sorry, sir, can we just not talk about an application? Can we just not talk about hypothetical applications that don't exist yet? If you want to do that, send it to Carolyn, we'll look at it at that point. We got another application tonight, let's just, you have an application in, let's talk about that one. Okay. Carolyn will, is very generous with her time after, on her other working hours.
That's it?
I'm loo, I'm opposed to public comment.
Second.
I'll say we're closing public comment. Ananmas, unanimous. Okay. So, uh, questions, board members, questions, questions amongst ourselves regarding this property, project?
I don't have any questions, but I think this lot, as it, as it is, oh, I haven't seen it, I didn't see it today, I will fess up to that. But as I remember this lot, from spending a lot of time in the Crescent Street neighborhood, this is very overgrown, it's like completely out of character with all the other grassy lots. So I almost think putting the cap, the cottage in and kind of clearing it down a little bit will actually make the overall character of the neighborhood better. Because right now, it's kind of like a plate, it's like a unkept vegetative mess in the middle of like all this well-manicured... Um, I think there are houses that are closer to the street and facing the street as you go right on the corner of Crescent. And I don't know what that one is, going up the hill, going up Round Hill Road, maybe this Round Hill Road, close to both of those streets. So really not too worried about the cottage, because... Which it does. I'm more concerned about, I thought DPW was saying it might be located on top of... Serving the existing house, so that might be more of a concern than... It's cited on the property, but I have, I have no concerns.
I don't have any concerns either, I actually like it. I think if you're going to do another accessory dwelling, you're going to give somebody the opportunity to have a first-floor living space. But sort of the population that doesn't always get served, because a lot of the older homes, two families, whatever, they've got side-by-side your bedrooms upstairs. You don't have a bedroom downstairs, so whether you move into this or not... And I think it would be charming, I think there's a lot of places where there's cottages on properties and all, all, all around it. When you drive by and you think, "Oh, that's really charming," there's something on, there's a secondary smaller house, probably 700 square feet or less, right? So if you look at that front yard, it's huge. 700 square feet is like a blip, like, seems like it'd be like the soda can in this little dome. I mean, it doesn't look very big on that lot, you know, especially if it's, the roofline's not turning up. So I don't have a problem with the cottage. So, I don't have a problem with the cottage.
I also have a follow-up. I do think you should evaluate that, turning into that space. It's not my business.
Maintain self-protection. Prior to construction, Certified Arborists sent a memo stating that tree protection has been installed and any recommended modifications prior to construction. Traffic mitigation.
Do we want to put anything in there about the city arborists taking over?
The city arborists only look, it does not look at private property. So, and we, you do not typically require second or third-party review of reports, whether it's engineering reports or arborist reports. They, you know, arborists that have done many studies for different property owners, so I know our tree warden is very comfortable with that, arborists.
I view that we approved the site plan for the detached unit, AD-8 Crescent, all the property, DPW recommendation.
Do you want the arborists implementing?
Okay, we got a second. So, all in favor of approving this project per the motion? Raise your hand, okay? We have unanimous, five votes. Good luck, Mr. George. It is a very, a true treasure over on that street, for sure. Yeah, beautiful, beautiful street. Okay. Moving on to our last hearing of the evening. So, next up is a site plan review for a detached second unit in the WSP district by Laura Minsky and Brahm Wilson at, thank you, 372 North Farmers Road in Florence. Make yourselves comfortable and come listen to your project.
We're looking to build a construction on our property.
Now, we have seen your drawings. We've seen the DPW report. I know that, so part of your, part of your plan is to remove the driveway on one side. And one of the DPW comments, you know, they have some stipulations on how you repair that and how you grade the new driveway where it meets the road.
That one out too? Here, nice.
I don't even know if anyone's...
Yeah, this is for the Zoom people. Somehow, that's, so they can hear us. Okay, so, board members. Before we open it up for public comment, do we have any questions for the applicant?
My only question's around, so you're putting in a new parking area. I saw there's a letter from a neighbor who is a little concerned about that. Is there any screening or anything planned for that apartment? Do you know, can you describe what those are going to be? Like an arbor by the or something?
Yes, arbor by the. I mean, we're open to talk.
Just so you know, the site plan does show both on the west side of the driveway and the north side, additional plantings, just screens around the...
Something by memory, so...
Yeah, yeah. And I didn't put that one up. I thought there would be some drive for that.
There's a four-foot fence around the heat pump, which is going to be on the side of the butters. And it's electric. I only had a question, does this require a front porch?
Not a porch, a covered entry.
Covered entry, that's what I mean. It looks like the covered entry is in the back by these drawings.
Let me just double-check.
Oh, yes, yes, it does. At this time, is there anybody that would like to speak out here regarding this project? And I am going to say in all honesty, this is mom and dad over here. My parents.
I'm here to check how she does. Ashley, my name is Monique Don, and my husband's over there. We're a butters, because it's a property that's being discussed right now. And we've lived in our home for fifty-five years. No, we don't look that old, but we have. We're not opposed to the new structure in any way. Laura's parents can come and be close to the... We don't like vegetation. They're moving it from the front of the house to their backyard, which is right next to our front yard and right next to our property line. And so, when we look out our windows, we look right out onto this parking lot. So, that's what we don't like. And we understand what they're trying to do. And we've talked to Laura, so she knows that we were going to say this tonight. But we're just asking them to consider keeping the parking where it is and to where we're going to be looking at.
So, the question is, do you all have purview over that? The, you want to make sure that if new parking is shown, that it's meeting all the standards, that it meets the standard. However, anyone at any time can relocate where their driveways are, and they don't even need planning board. So, it could very, I mean, these property owners could not do the addition and still move their driveway. The real review is about the addition of that second unit and ensuring that there's enough parking for that second. And that the parking meets the standard. So, you can't say this parking is not allowed. And of course, you'd want to mitigate any issues related to the introduction of new elements on-site. The applicant has shown that they're providing vegetation to... Parking area for... Many of the properties in the city have much bigger and wider driveways, wider both and longer, so accommodating is small relative to...
Trouble getting on the archives. Can you put the site plan on the screen, or is that not easy to do that? Down the bottom there. It's hard to know where else you would put a curb cut for a new house that's there. So, and then if it comes down to someone being able to move parking at will after we approve, then I don't see what the... Is there a permit for a new curb cut?
Yeah, just through DPW. And so, there are comments too, relating to restoring the old curb cuts, right? And in fact, there's two there. So, this, you know, it eliminates the two there and down to one. But here on out, yes, they'd have to sort of follow, they get a trench permit request. Also, some other comments about drainage that in the design, they want sort of there at the driveway to... Could be a condition that you... Sort of safety, that all the runoff from the driveway stay on-site at the floors as opposed to dumping it to the front.
Actual curb at this...
That's a salt curb last year.
Oh, they did, oh, wow.
Suppose the applicant could at their discretion, if the parking area down the page, if it's their own house, I don't think I have any purview to...
It all needs the layout requirement.
Any other public comment?
I'm going to close public comment.
Okay. Go to close public comment. Unanimous. We find ourselves in this position a lot, right? We have to, we have to look at just what's in front of us. And then, just like the last applicant that was here, we only have the purview to approve what's in front of us. There's other conversations that happened after that, neighbors.
Waiving the traffic mitigation fee. I'm going to be saying we'll keep sediment on-site for all these projects, so let's keep saying that.
Parking lot should be graded to retain stormwater.
And you could, I mean, DPW has the jurisdiction to, as part of the curb cut permit, to require that apron. So, you can either have it as another condition, or I'm sure they can, they would require it anyway because they have jurisdiction over how the street gets cut.
Leave it to the experts.
Looking at that, you know, it's necessary, they're not...
Approve the site plan for Minsky and Wilson project at 372 North Farmers Road, Florence, MAP ID seven dash fifteen and seven dash fifty. Conditions that we just went over, keeping the soap on site.
Stormwater.
Stormwater. And waiving the parking, traffic mitigation fee.
Okay, all in favor of that motion? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
It's so much faster, you don't have to do a roll call.
Yeah. But the hotter it gets in here, the slower we get.
Wave though, just a second.
If there's more breeze here than there is downstairs.
In the chamber?
Well, I was about ready to open all the...
No.
I don't have the Kennedy Road in ours, there's a little glitch in the survey. It would have required a zoning board permit first. So, it doesn't need that. So, that's not on your agenda. The only other thing is summer schedule and then bylaws. I don't know if you want to... Actually, there were some modifications recommended by the zoning board for the bylaws that affected all of them. So, what I might do is resend them.
Which bylaws are we talking about?
Sort of just the planning board's governing structure.
Is that the one I missed, I guess?
Yeah, the last one we had, right?
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is resend it to you all after I make these edits. There were just clarification, some punctuation, pretty minor stuff, but I think tightens it up. And then, we can have it on an agenda. We do have a meeting May twenty-sixth. Although, it may be there, because I'm working with North Hampton Open Media to figure out how to use the bigger room. And that's a shorter, there are three permits for that hearing. I don't know anything yet about June. In terms of the summer schedule, it looks like July fourteenth and August eleventh are the winters. Those are the dates I got.
Say them again, I...
July fourteenth and August eleventh.
Apparently not. You need to turn them off, otherwise I'm using them.
Ninety minutes.
Ready for that one.
And that's in person.
You can only do Zoom till July fifteenth, right now.
Did we start off that one? Who would want to do Zoom after this?
I think we talked about possibly doing it in July.
So, what she wants to do. I need to know before I advertise them, I don't have time to...
I like not having sixty people here. Oh, I heard.
Are we still in, we're still in the meeting, technically.
Yeah, right, we are.
Do we have to decide on July and August now? We can decide next time?
No, we can decide next meeting, but I'm just telling you that's what the deal is.
I'd like to do that with George here too, so... Because we want more people here so we can leave and still have a quorum. Can't be here in August.
Close, to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor of closing the meeting? Arraigned at eight forty-eight.
Job girl.